Call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Monday, December 5th. Rule call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as it's been presented?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Those were made in second of discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Consent items. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval the city council minutes of November 21st, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of November 28th, council payable report for November 17th through November 28th, a resolution for the consideration of designating polling places for elections in 2023, consider approval of the First Amendment to agricultural land lease agreements, and for council's information, 2023 Flaherty and Hood rate schedule.
Make a motion. Those were made.
Second.
Those were made, and second, approve the consent items as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Ask.
I'd like to pull item D.
Okay, pulling item D. Anything else? With the exception of item D, rule call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've voiced some of these concerns to Clerk Thompson in the past, but I continue to find it unacceptable that we are asking voters to leave their ward to vote. So, the first precinct of the third ward leaves Ward Three to vote. I'm also in trouble by the fact that it's a similar polling precinct. We're sending them to another ward's precinct and asking them to vote where citizens from the fourth ward are already voting, so they're coming into a gym. I think it's been structured fine, it's been staffed fine, but they walk into a gym and they're immediately asked, "What ward are you in?" And even pretty well-educated citizens of Wilmer do not know their ward. I've had a couple people complain that they were, you know, they went to the wrong ward, they stood in line for a couple minutes, and then were then sent to the other side of the gym. So, I find it unacceptable that we can't find a polling precinct for the first precinct of Ward Three somewhere in the third ward, and would much rather see it in the third ward or at least have its own separate polling precinct. So, I'd like to table this and take the next two weeks to find a more acceptable location for the citizens of the first precinct and Ward Three to vote. I'd like to make it easier for our voters to vote.
The motion to table, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. On the motion to table the issue, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is tabled. Staff, bring that back to the next meeting, please. Ms. Valiant, we can maybe kind of see how we can work that, and then bring back a favorable resolution, maybe speak directly with Councilmember Ask in regards to this. If other councilmembers have concerns, get with Ms. Valiant on that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have open forum. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on their open forum?
No, there's no one that signed up.
Next, we have a public hearing. The first public hearing we have is a public hearing for truth in taxation to establish the 2023 tax levy and to set the 2023 budget. For this, I'll turn to our finance director, Mr. Olkins. I'll now open the public hearing. For those on your computers, page 39.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As discussed at an earlier work session, the meeting tonight is a public hearing for the public and to gather input on what the mayor has proposed for the 2023 tax levy and budget. There'll be two actions that'll be requested tonight after you take public input and after you close the public hearing. The first action that will be required is for you to set the 2023 tax levy at a proposed And the second resolution will be to set the 2023 budget for $55,694 and $526. That includes the general operating fund, special revenue funds, debt service fund, and the waste treatment plant. The budget calendar, as you have had in the past, was started in September. Actually, the mayor started way back in July with the administrator and the finance to compile information and present that to you, which he did in September. The certified proposed tax levy of $9,188 was certified to the county on September 30th, and that is what they prepared their tax notices that went out to all the citizens. The discussion tonight will only be on the city portion. There will be, there's four portions of a person's property tax notice that they received, the county, city, school district, and any kind of special taxing jurisdictions. So, the discussion tonight at this public hearing is only for the city portion, as we discussed. This is the truth in taxation hearing that is, was adopted at the calendar. As part of the work session, we did have discussion on comparative numbers, what actually the city has incurred for additional property tax value. So, the real estate estimated market value went up roughly $1.5 million, and that's due to new construction. New construction consisted of a lot of additional value in the industrial park, some apartment complexes, and those types of value increases. Now, the value increases will enable the city to increase their dollar amount of levy, and that would not have an impact on the tax rate. But what was proposed at the work session was an increase of roughly six mills. Each mill will generate approximately $175,000 additional. That is up and above the new value of what that would generate. The new mills would generate little over $1 million of the 1.8 increase that's being proposed. The $800,000 basically is being covered by increased value and new construction, as been discussed in past years. There's a little bit of a history of the tax rates for the city of Wilmer. Again, what's being proposed is an additional two mills for street improvements and an additional four mills for operating costs. Again, this is some comparative numbers for other regional centers, as we discussed at the work session. The regional centers that we compared to were New Ulm, Albert Lee, Worthington, Hutchinson, Marshall, Fairbault, Austin, and then Wilmer. You'll see a slight difference in the 2022 tax rate. For comparative purposes, we took the rates off of the Department of Revenue website so that we were doing comparative numbers for all communities that we compared to. Again, we did some comparative numbers to other neighboring county seats, Yellow Madison County, Granite Falls, Benson, Olivia, Montevideo, Redwood Falls, New Ulm, Glencoe, Glenwood, Litchfield, Marshall, Morris, Long Prairie. Again, as you'll see there, the city of Wilmer with the proposed increase, or in the '22 was the lowest of all those neighboring communities, as well as the regional centers that we compared to. Other comparisons that were discussed at the work session were for Candyway County communities. Again, you'll see there that Wilmer is second to the lowest, with Regal being at the bottom of all Candyway County communities. As I mentioned in the opening remarks, the proposed levy for 2023 is $9,188,990. The levy in 2022 is $7.33,313,672, or roughly six mil increase. In comparison to what that proposed increase would do to various property types, and again, we are talking about the city portion only, this, I believe the county held their meeting earlier this week or last week, school district, and we'll have those discussions as well. But on a $250,000 residential house, the estimated increase is $153. You'll see there, again, $350,000, roughly a little over 200, and a $450,000 residential property, $260,000. And then there's a commercial property of a million and industrial property of 5.5 million. Mr. Mayor, that would talk to the property tax levy on the first resolution. The second resolution, as I mentioned, is $40, or $55,694. Again, that consists of the general operating fund of roughly $21 million, capital improvement funds of 17.5, which consists of a number of revenue sources, a little over 1.8 million will be transferred from the general operating fund to cover costs of items that are being proposed for the auditorium, parks and rec on some additional lights for Swanson Field, some public works equipment, and $582,000 worth of vehicle upgrades for the police department and the public works department. Also included in that $55 million figure are special revenue funds of a little over $4 million. Those are funds that the city either is required to designate because of state statute, federal grants, or pass action by the council. Those include items similar to the Convention of Visitors Bureau, where there's a lodging tax that has to be used for that purpose and that purpose only. Additional local option sales taxes included in that number. Again, the sales tax can only be used for the projects or debt service that those projects were approved for, and additional, the community investment in public works, which is, again, for debt retirement on the 10-year street program. Also included in that $55 million is debt service. The major debt service items that are included in that are the local option sales tax of 1.7 million, 10-year street program of a little over $2 million, and the tax increment districts, which, again, are restricted and can only be used for tax increment districts. Also included in there is enterprise of $8.5 million, which is the waste treatment plant. There is no proposed rate increase for the waste treatment plant. That is when the relocation and expansion of the industrial park, when the waste treatment plant, or when the waste treatment plant moved from the location by the mall, I guess. And that's at $8.5 million. Those are the numbers that are included in the $55.6 million. Again, the valuations, there's a number of items that may affect a person's property tax notice when they get it. I talked about the new construction, which have an impact. Increase in the property value, the person's property value would also impact their amount of increase that they may see in notifications. Again, the action that we'll be asking after the public hearing will be to set the preliminary tax levy at the 9.1 million and adopt the, second action will be to adopt the budget at 15.6 million.
Thank you, Steve. This is a public hearing. The public hearing has been opened. We've had preliminary comments from our finance director, and so if there's members of the public who wish to speak during this portion of the truth in taxation, please come to the podium, state your name, and if you reside within the city of Wilmer or not, and then make sure that Ms. Thompson has your address and all of that stuff, in case there's things we want to follow up with, so, okay? So, is anybody that wishes to speak from the public on the truth in taxation?
Sorry, I'm short. My name is Ashley Stampfis, or also Y. Logi. I live at 609th Street Southwest in Wilmer. I'm looking to have an appraisal done on my house, because I had the, I got my tax, my property tax, and I would like to have it assessed, because it's, of course, went up quite a bit, actually, 28%. And it's showing for next year that my house is worth $200,000, and it definitely is not worth that. I have not done any updating inside since I bought it for $116,000 back in 2008. My kitchen is like a 70s kitchen. I have a bathroom that's literally out of the 50s. The windows are all basically original to the house. I have like four windows that I've replaced, and that's about it. So, I just like to have an appraisal come in and walk through my house and appraise it that way, so I can make sure that it is being appraised right and not, not just by how many people or how a house nearby is sold. Because even to the house to the south of me was sold for 180 after that house was actually bought, gutted completely and redone. So, so that's just...
Okay. So, if you're requesting an appraisal of your home?
Yes.
That's, as Mr. Olkins has stated, that's done through Candyway County?
Okay.
And so, if you go down to the building in downtown Wilmer, and you just ask for the assessor's office, and you can ask them to come out and do an assessment of your home, and then they will tell you what that valuation is. So, you're not opposed to the taxation we're talking about today? You're concerned about the valuation of your property, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, if you go ahead and do that, and if you have questions, talk to Ms. Valiant, and she will assist you on where to get to there and how to do that process, so, okay? So, Ms. Valiant can help you with that.
Right, thank you.
You bet, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak to the truth in taxation? And again, the valuation, that part goes, is done by the county, so, again, state your name, if you reside within this city or not.
Yeah, my name is Kirk Vanderpoel. I reside at 815 Candyway Avenue Southwest. Sorry, I'm just gonna, I was told I need to write this down.
That just helps our staff.
Yep. You may have answered some of my question already with the market value. I purchased my home late in 2021, and my city portion has gone up 39.8% this year, which I think is excessive. I understand that my valuation went up because of the purchase of my house, and that's probably a year in the rears, because it missed, based on when I purchased it in October of 2021, it probably missed the increase in valuation there. But I certainly don't get a 39% wage increase every year. And so, I just want to make you aware of that, that that's gonna, between the rest of my taxes for the other entities, increase under $300,000 house by $800, so...
Okay. And again, if you have questions specific to that, Ms. Valiant can help you with that, so, thank you. It sounds to me, again, like this is a valuation issue.
And then, I don't know if I saw percentages in the presentation. While I appreciate Wilmer being on the lower end of the tax rate, what was the percentage increase in the Wilmer-only section? I don't recall hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and citizens, the percentage increase on the dollar amount was roughly 25%. As I mentioned in the presentation, the increase due to new construction was 11 of that 25%, 14% was basically due to increases in the tax dollar amount.
I could follow up? Again, I'd just like to point out, I didn't get a 25% raise.
And, so you break those...
Most people did.
Right. So, if you break those numbers down, it's about 14% increase, because 11% of that was due to valuation. It's about 14%. It's 25% overall.
I'd have been happy with a 14% raise, too.
I think we all would be.
Yeah. But the city's getting it, so I just would like some explanation for that.
Well, I'll try to explain it a little bit to you. We have not done very well on our street improvements, and there's a substantial percentage of the increase in these dollars that are going to go to street improvements. Last year, the council raised the levy by two points to go directly to improvements to streets. This year, the city is raising it by additional four points to go for, directly to replace our streets. The number one concern that I, as the mayor and council members, have echoed this is that the number one concern we hear is about our streets. So, if you take those four points, Steve, those four points would equate to about what percent? Just over 8% of the 11%?
The, it'd be roughly 1/3 of the 14%, because it's increasing it by two mills. The total increase is six mills. Two of those are for additional street work, and so, 1/3 of that, so it'd be roughly 5%,
So, about 5% of it.
So, 9%.
So, it ends up being a total of four points on the levy that are going towards streets, so it would be approximately 5%. So, that would put us down at right around that 9%. And we're juggling numbers here, I mean, don't hold us to... The mayor said, because we're rounding here.
And don't get me wrong, I'm supportive, but I just find it hard to stomach. And I pay taxes, I don't have a problem paying taxes in general. In fact, I often vote for people that have a tendency to raise taxes. Yes, other councilmembers who normally may know. But, that said, 39% is a little crazy, I think, so...
Thank you. Just for people to talk to the truth in taxation. Thank you for your comments, Kirk. Haven't seen you for a while, Joe.
No, how y'all doing?
Don't have my bulletproof vest on today, so...
I'm sorry, what?
I said I don't have my bulletproof vest on today, so...
Yeah, there you go. I apologize, last time I kinda was tough.
Well, maybe a little bit.
Yeah.
I do have a memory.
Joe Riddler, 1912 20th Avenue Southwest, Wilmer. A little perplexed with this increase in taxes. First of all, little concerned about all the tax programs for all these apartment complexes coming to Wilmer. Reads into a couple of things, one that you were just talking about, you're banging all of us, higher taxes that own houses. You have people coming in that are renting, that are using the roads, that are not contributing. It's broken. They need to start paying. They are not paying their fair share. I'm sorry, I've been busy with a new job. I wasn't involved with your new street program, but I understand, if I am correct, if you own a house, now you have to pay 100% of the street improvement of your dwelling, is that correct? Or is it 75, 25 yet?
No, it's not even that high. I think it's closer to...
30%.
30, 70. 70 to the owner, 30 to the city?
30% of any special assessments.
I mean, whatever. Doesn't equate to that, but anyway...
So, the citizen pays 30, the city pays 70.
But anyway, you have, you have a lot of TIF programs going out here that's not healthy for our community. You think it is. You're bringing in building permits, you're bringing in low income, the medium is not increasing. And if you own a home, you're comparing our values of our homes to smaller communities around us. The homes in Wilmer are worth more money. So, your percentage looks lower, and their percentage looks higher. Believe me, it's just not a fair comparisons to the public. I wish you'd do a little bit, I don't think it's a fair comparisons, that's my opinion. Of your increase, folks, how much of the increase is due to, there's a couple of questions for you, Mr. Olkins. Percentage of increase to wages and benefits? Like to know that. How much of the increase is going to your new city hall? Or our city hall, it would be? And, I got one more question here, but it's, I think I already covered it. Anyway, the last couple of questions...
Can I answer those two questions?
Yeah, would you please, sir?
So, the ones that, so later in the agenda, you'll see that we are considering the 2023 health insurance premiums for our non-represented employees. And so, 100% of that increase in the premium is getting passed on to the employee, so there's no, there's no increase being proposed there.
Okay.
Our contracts are not currently settled, so we don't know, so we can't give you a number on what those are, because those contracts are currently unsettled. The amount of money going to the city hall is two points on the levy, and so, three points on the levy, and so that, so it's 175 times three, which is, 3, 4, 470, approximately 470.
Half a million.
Approximately half a million.
Okay. So, out of our half a percent sales tax, so how much is that going to the proposed building?
Zero. So, the projected revenues on that is just over 2 million, and Mr. Olkins, in his presentation, said that about 1.79 are the expenses of that. So, we're actually, to the plus side of the ledger, right around 300,000. Rough numbers, again, don't hold me to hard numbers here, I don't have anything written down.
Yeah. Do you know, folks, how much TIF money did you hand out this year?
How much TIF money did we...
Yeah, well, your TIF programs with buildings going on in our city. Mr. Olkins, do you know that?
I don't know if it's relevant to the question.
Well, it is, because you have people that are getting tax breaks, and we own homes and we're not getting tax breaks. It is a concern.
You know the number?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in 23 proposals, there's roughly $225,000 that's estimated to be for tax increment.
225,000?
Interesting, I thought it was more than that. Anyway, 25 is, it's a big number, folks. And, again, comparing our values of our houses and saying that we've been holding it down is really not a fair comparisons to the public. And there are a lot of elderly people in my community that they're looking at and they're going, "What the, you-know-what? Where am I coming up with $60 to $75 more a month?" So, that's a big number for these retired people. You know, when you're handing out other people's money, please keep that in hand, please, keep that in mind. Thank you for your time.
Just want to counter questions on the truth in taxation. Mr. Vanderpoel?
This is a good learning experience for me, so I'm going to ask some questions while I'm here. I would like to know, with the new apartment buildings, which, by the way, I love to see going up, but what is the percentage of their valuation that they pay on taxes compared to a homeowner? Does that question make sense? So, if theirs is worth 100,000 and mine is worth 100,000, do they pay a higher or lower percentage of taxes? Because those are the people that are making a ton of money.
They would, when the property comes online, they would pay a higher percentage than what we pay, than what you would pay as a homeowner. I think the previous speaker, his concern was is that we're handing out the tax income and financing, and that's a philosophy question. And so, the appropriate time to address that is during the truth, during the public hearing for the truth in taxation, I mean, I'm sorry, for the TIF project itself, is the time to talk about that. But basically, in a nutshell, my view of it is that if you agree, if you believe in TIF, you believe in the future of the community, and the community's going to be stronger and better in the future. That's what TIF does, is it brings things to the community, assets and amenities to the community, that down the road, you're going to be able to collect those back. And that's a philosophy, in that each individual person's, if you ask all nine of us, all nine of us would have a different answer. If you ask all nine of us, all nine of us would have a different answer to that question. I'm just giving you my answer.
Yep, and I likely would fall in the same boat as you there. But I guess my... I'm just curious, the percentage. My experience in life is that those who have money make money. And those apartments, while they bring some increased tax revenue, I'm sure they're far benefiting the owners of those apartments. And so I'm curious, a regular homeowner pays X percent, and an apartment owner pays what percent? I would like to know that.
Again, that number we would get from the assessor's office, and I don't think any of us are prepared to answer that tonight.
Those are classifications. So the state has classifications for properties. So residential property is a different classification. And then there's like 20, 30 different kinds of credits that each resident can have too, because they can get credits for their valuations if they live next to a highway or there's noise or whatever, and they can decrease your property values. Tonight, we're talking about the budget. We're not talking about valuations. In April is the Board of Equalization, and I all encourage you, if you have questions about your valuations, that's when you come to talk to the assessor on how valuations are all calculated.
I agree that I'm not... I don't need to talk about valuations, I'm not asking about valuations. I'm asking about a percentage of tax. And I believe you guys control that.
No.
No, that's controlled by the state.
You have no control over how much you get taxed?
They're based on classifications, like I said, and that's all state classifications with assessors. Assessors has to meet valuations based on state classifications.
But your budget affects the percentage that we get taxed?
Overall. The overall percentage.
And does it affect homeowners equally to apartment owners?
According to the formula, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Additional comments to the truth in taxation?
My name is Ron Buchanan. I live here in Wilmer at 412 13th Street. And I was just hoping tonight I could get some better feeling for why my taxes went up 43%. I thought that was a big strike. My house is a pretty modest home. It has a market value of $138,000. The taxable market value is $138,000, the retail is $161,000. And my taxes went up 43%. And I was just kind of curious as to, if I came to the meeting, I could maybe hear some justification for that kind of an increase.
So can you show your statement to Ms. Valiant? I'm assuming that was on the valuation is probably where the majority of that increase came from.
He did take the difference between his increase. So his actual in 2022 is by 13, and this proposed... And these are proposed, because we don't have actual market value taxable capacities. So these are all estimates, okay? So it's at $735 is the increase, so it's an increase of $221.
So it's a little bit higher than the numbers that you thought, so there's got to be some increase in the assessed value. So I think it's on the... I think some of your percentage of increase...
His valuation went up $29,000 or more.
What's that?
So that's the increase in the valuation. $28,558 was the increase.
And that's kind of what Mr. Olkins, Kurt, to your question. That's what Mr. Olkins said the numbers were.
Mr. Mayor, again, without seeing these statements, again, tonight's meeting is only to address the city portion. I don't know if that includes the county and the school.
The valuation increased a 26%. So that would be the reason for the increase of 20% for your... For the majority of your increases.
The majority of your increase is... And so for those that are watching tonight, about 26% of it... 26% of his increase is due to the valuation increase, and about 20% of his increase is due to the increase in the city. And that's similar to what others had experienced, and that's similar to what Mr. Olkins had stated in his comments when he made his secondary comments, so... Anybody else that wishes to speak to the truth in taxation? Anybody else who wishes to speak to truth in taxation? Mr. Riddler? Go to the... This is your time, because once it's closed, then you don't... Well, you can still come back and talk to Doug later, but...
Thank you very much. Question on the roads. I have a question on our roads. I have a difficult time, again, with all the apartment complexes coming in, if they're paying their fair share to use our infrastructure. And I think the gentleman was trying to get to, if he's paying a percentage per square foot for his dwelling, are the people renting paying a percentage, an equal percentage, of the space they're renting? So are you paying $117 a square foot, whatever? I think the gentleman that spoke here a few minutes ago, he's trying to find equal. What's fair? And the problem I have is we're building a lot of apartment complexes. Why do you want to build a home in our city? You look at the cost per month of what these people or what we endure. And then these people that are going to come in, and there's a lot of programs that they're coming in on, on a low-end rate, and they're using all the infrastructure we, the tax owners, the houses, are paying. And it's... The playing field's not level. You guys got a tough job ahead of you here, but, you know, and there's a lot of people talking about you behind their back, and what in the world are y'all doing? What we're trying to do is find what's fair. And with all the apartments that are going to be coming in, and there's going to be more, are they paying their fair share? Because the way it's set up right now, no, they're not. We, the landowners, are paying the brunt. And the people that own the apartment complexes, they are not paying as much as we are per square foot. Somehow, there needs to be an overhaul on who's paying what on our roads. We all know we're way behind, way behind on our city. And you're stepping out, Mr. Reese is coming in, he's got a big job. But somehow, you folks, and there'll be some new ones in back sitting here, have to come up with some kind of a program that's fair for our community, and that's going to be able to move us forward, because right now, we all know we're going backwards. And even what you all put in the budget, it's not enough. We all know that, it's not enough. So please consider that. Thank you for letting me speak.
So the rental units would be non-homesteaded, so they would pay a higher rate because they're non-homesteaded. And then, again, the formulas are set by the state, so I'd encourage you to get ahold of Mr. Baker and Mr. Lang on that, because they can address that, we can't address that locally. So additional comments or questions that people have in regards to truth in taxation here in the city of Wilmer? Additional questions people have? Additional questions people have? At this point, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Steve, for your presentation, and I'll bring it to the council table. So we have heard from a number of our citizens, and we have two actions that we have to take. The first action is to establish the 2023 tax levy. It is, at this point, proposed at $9,188,990. The second action we have to do is to set the 2023 budget at $55,694,526. As a reminder, for each point on the levy is a savings of approximately $175,000. We have four points of the levy, two additional points going to streets this year, and we have three... Four mil going for streets, we have three mil going for the city hall. Council, what are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor will make a motion to adopt the 2023 tax levy at $9,188,900.
Second.
Most of them are made and seconded to establish the 2023 tax levy at $9,188,990. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Olkins, for the presentation tonight, and thank you for your attention to detail with the assemblance of this, along with the mayor and other city staff. I think the discussion that we're having tonight is good and it's poignant. Not so much that I think that there's so much immediate action that we can take, but I'm on my way out, so my hopes are kind of all philosophical and maybe pointed a little bit towards the future a little bit more. But this is a good indication, the discussions that we're having here and the discussions that I've had with family members, actually, and with neighbors and with friends, and even in my own household. I had sticker shock when I opened up the envelope and looked at the paper. It is like a perfect storm, because when you have a slight raise in taxes and you have a raise in assessed property value, it's like you're getting these compounding numbers. The numbers compound upon themselves. And so I think the name of the game is... Well, first of all, I'll also preface with the fact that, I mean, if any of us hears the term inflation one more time, we're probably going to gag, right? Because that's like term of 2022. But it is what it is. We've realized it with construction, but we're also realizing it when it comes to capital expenditures and when it comes to deferred maintenance. Costs are simply going up. Our costs of operating, the cost for electricity, cost for water, cost for roads, construction, cost for buildings, you name it. You know, personnel and just keeping everything together, costs are rising. And so, you know, the only option that we... Honestly, the only option that we would have if we wanted to have no tax increase, because the assessed value is going up. So if we kept the percentage flat, tax would still increase based on those increased assessments. So taxes are going up regardless. So in my humble opinion, the name of the game is mitigation. What can we do to mitigate? And what can we do to properly mitigate while still taking care of our city staff, while still taking care of our city buildings, our facilities, our infrastructure? All, you know, our roadways, everything. Everything that our residents and we as residents pay for. This is our community, we pay for this community. But the cost of living in our community and virtually every other community across the United States, those costs are rapidly increasing. So, yeah, point well taken that we face a very difficult... You know, a very difficult task, and elected leaders across the country do as well. I believe that these... And I'm a flat tax guy. I was on board with the federal flat tax idea when it was presented a few years back and a few years before that, it's been talked about many times, so I'm favorable to that. But with regards to this, after sifting through all the numbers, after seeing all the projects, and after eight years of going through these meetings and seeing what it is that we're paying for and what it is that we're doing and where we're hoping to be, I don't know that there are any easy solutions. It would be easy to just say, nope, we're not going to have any increases. But if we said that, there would be ripple effects, because that money's got to come from somewhere. So where do we cut it from? And that's where the discussion gets really difficult, because, you know, we're not building, you know, grand amusement parks and stuff like that. We're doing what we can to grow the city productively and proactively, and I believe that to be true, and if I didn't, then I would have a problem with this. With that said, it's a jagged pill to swallow. It is. Nobody, like I said, I had sticker shock when I opened up the envelope and saw the amount. It's not fun. So I think the name of the game for the future, again, is mitigation. Hopefully, you know, inflationary things get under control, especially with regards to construction costs, because it will help our money go further. But we've also heard, you know, similarly from other sectors in our community. People expect, they expect quality roads to drive on. They expect the lights to turn on when they flip the switch. They expect the water to continue running, they expect safe drinking water. There's a whole lot of expectations out there, and it all costs money. And that's one area that I had a big lesson to learn when I first jumped in here in 2014. And I have. So with that said, you know, hoping for bright days and hoping for a bright future, and I think we're setting ourselves up. But at the same time, I think it's always good to just pause and reflect and realize that... You know, realize the real-world effects do affect each and every one of us that live in the city. And when that bill goes up, it goes up for everybody, in different proportions, yes. But everybody's experiencing it, and we all are carrying a load. So thank you, I'm done on my soapbox.
Additional comments or questions? Good points. Most of them are made and seconded to establish the 2023 tax levy at $9,188,990. Roca.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next, we are looking to set the 2023 budget at $55,694,526.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Most of them are made and seconded, discussion. Roca.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes as well. I again want to thank Mr. Olkins and Ms. Valiant and her team for the work that they put into this. I know our operations director spent countless hours on this budget and really appreciate your expertise and the vision that you had of coming from a different city to have us look at it differently in how we could work to make this really a good product. So thank you all for your wisdom, your vision, and your forward-leaning thought process to get us where we are today, so thank you all. Leslie, thank the rest of your staff that worked on this as well. I'm probably missing somebody.
Thank you.
You bet. Next, we have a public hearing to consider an ordinance regulating the removal of snow, ice, dirt, and rubbish from public sidewalks and private streets. I will open the public hearing and call on Mr. Box, our operations director, to present the ordinance. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening. This is follow-up action from two weeks ago where the ordinance was introduced. So city staff have reviewed the current ordinance regarding a removal of snow, dirt, rubbish, ice from public sidewalks. This ordinance amendment is really an emphasis on public health, public safety. And what it allows city staff to do is, after snow, ice has ceased to fall, 24 hours after that has ended, city staff can then go in and abate and remove the public or safety hazard, snow, ice, from the public sidewalks. There was a follow-up question from Councilmember Butterfield, I have not forgotten about you, council member. Once this is... If this ordinance is adopted, we will issue it with this exact copy of the ordinance to the property owners that you had referenced at the last meeting and notify them of the changes.
Even if it doesn't go through?
Even if it doesn't go through, we will still notify them, yes, absolutely. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, this is an amendment to the existing ordinance focusing on the amount of time staff needed to abate snow and ice.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this ordinance? Hearing none? Was that a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? Anyone wanting to speak on this ordinance? Third time, anyone want to speak on this ordinance? All right, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council. All right, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. We got a motion and a second to approve this ordinance for removal of snow, ice, dirt, and rubbish from public sidewalks and private streets. Further discussion. Mr. Butterfield.
Do we have a dollar amount figured out for this yet? What the homeowners would have to pay?
Um, off the top of my head, I, I don't have it. I believe the administrat, it's in our fee schedule, there's an administrative fee, I believe, of seventy-five or a hundred dollars, and then it'd be staff time.
Okay.
Otherwise, if it was contracted out, it would be the contracted rate, whatever, whatever we would pay.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a rock call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
One thing, Mr. Mayor. Driving by the Fairgrounds and Radio Station Road today, the walking path was drifted shut. I believe that's the city's responsibility.
We'll follow up.
So I'm sure it'll be done within twenty-four hours then.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Resolution passes.
Oh, the resolution passes, yeah.
Next, we have the City Engineering Department recommending approval for a resolution supporting pursuit of active transportation infrastructure funding for the Nineteenth Avenue Trail Improvement. Our consulting engineer, engineer, Mr. Vogi.
All right, good evening, mayor, council. Uh, as staff was reviewing the Nineteenth Avenue Trail Project that's been considered for a number of years, in addition, it's in the CIP, um, we've been pursuing potential funding sources for that improvement, and we have identified the Active Transportation Infrastructure Program as an opportunity to offset some of the costs associated with that trail construction. Uh, the grant application requires a resolution by the council, and for the benefit of, um, those who might not have the packet, the trail that's being discussed along Nineteenth Avenue would be from Fifteenth Avenue Southwest, uh, to Fifth Street Southeast. That's the section of trail that we're, that we're discussing. So with that, uh, staff recommendation is to adopt that resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Also, what are your wishes?
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution of support for the pursuit of the Active Transportation Infrastructure Funding for Nineteenth Avenue Trail Improvement.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Mr. Vogi, I just have one question. What do you think our chances are on this? I mean, I see that they're, you know, a little over three and a half million, you know, each city can apply for up to half a million. Um, I mean, do we sit fairly well or is this kind of a shot in the dark type thing or?
Um, I don't think it's necessarily a shot in the dark since the project has been, um, pursuing funding in the past. It's identified in the CIP, um, other local trail program, uh, plans. I, I think there's, there's a reasonably good chance. Um, however, as you mentioned, it's three point five million throughout the entire state. So, uh, what we've been noticing recently is grants are definite, definitely competitive. But nonetheless, with the five hundred thousand max grant, uh, it would certainly be a step in the right direction to getting that trail completed.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thanks for your work on this and your staff as well. Next, we have consideration of 2023 health insurance premiums for non-union employees. Ms. Sitsima, our human resources director.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So I bring before you today a request for, um, approval. The city of Wilmer has received our, and reviewed our 2023 health insurance increases amounts for the next year, and the increase was four point eight nine percent for single coverage and four point nine six percent for family. Currently, employees pay about two dollars and seventy-one cents for the single plan per month and seven dollars and twenty-three cents for a family plan. So it's recommended that a hundred percent of this rate increase be placed on the employee's contribution. The proposed monthly rate would be thirty-one dollars, thirty-four cents for singles coverage and eighty-three, sixty-six a month for family plan for all non-union employees. I'll answer any questions.
Staff is recommending that, uh, we adopt, the, the staff's recommendation of, uh, putting the increase onto the, uh, onto the, the non-union employees.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve staff's recommendation on the health insurance premiums. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Ms. Sitsima, thank you for your work on this. I know you guys have been working really hard on all of this stuff, and it's not easy. So, um, thank you for that. Next, we have community pride announcements. I just want to congratulate Ms. Valiant, uh, for, uh, her position on, at the Ridgewater Foundation. She accepted that position, uh, on their board. Uh, it's a volunteer board, and it's something that, uh, she will represent the city well on. Just want to make the citizens aware that she is serving in that capacity, um, and this will be a tremendous asset, not only for Ridgewater, but also an extension of the services that we provide as a city out into the community and support that. So any, any of the council have any other community pride announcements? Councilmember Plowman.
Just, uh, kudos to MUC. Today, there was a, uh, uh, entanglement between a vehicle and some power lines on North County Road Five that resulted in a very brief power outage, uh, but the guys were still out there working on my way here tonight, about four trucks' worth of guys, um, at six fifteen, and, uh, they'd been out there since about noon. So they were up in buckets and, uh, they had power restored and they were working to get everything completed yet tonight. So they did a fantastic job, and that was resolved quite quickly. So, uh, proud of our local municipal utilities. They do a great job.
Excellent. Good point, yes. Additional comments? With that, we're going to go into close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point zero five, sub three C. Undertaking a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. So if you, uh, if you are not a part of the invited group, uh, we would ask you to leave.